Good morning. Happy Wednesday. JR Lewis with you here on KLAM and it's time for the Town Meeting Program, the on-demand talk show brought to you on AM 1450 by Cordova Wireless Communications. They are your local cellphone and wireless data provider, providing your local talk program. Although we don't actually have a local guest today, but it could lead to some fascinating local opportunity to bond with your kids or possibly introduce something fun into the schools. We're going to be visiting with an author named Chris Parsons, who's written a children's book called A Little Spark. And it's a fascinating concept, you know, setting the story aside, the idea that he came up with to kind of do the reverse of what we see so often with books, you know, there's this constant push, intended or not, to pull kids away from traditional media like books or board games or things and move them to screen. So they're playing games online, they're reading online, constantly interacting with technology. And what Chris Parsons has done here is to kind of flip that around and bring some technology into the reading and enjoyment of a book. So when you read the book with your kids, there are QR codes essentially that you can scan with a phone or a tablet and that will bring up music to accompany while you're reading the book to the kids. Or there's an audiobook version of it for sort of a read-along and there are supplemental materials and just it was, it was a very, I mean, and understand, I get requests from authors to do talk shows on books all the time, but this one, this one was really fascinating. So even though, like I said, it's not a local author, we decided to go and go ahead and look into this a little more and it ended up being a really fascinating conversation. So I hope you enjoy it. Again, the author's name is Chris Parsons and the book is A Little Spark. You'll learn all about it and the message that it tries to deliver here on the Town Meeting Program for Wednesday, December the 14th. Here, let me make sure we're getting, we are getting audio, which is helpful. And so we'll just dive right in. And starting in three, two, one. So Chris Parsons, very nice to have you with us here today. And obviously I'd like to get a chance to meet you a little bit, give our audience a chance to meet you. So tell us, tell us about your background.
Well, I grew up in a little fishing village in Newfoundland, the far north. And I was surrounded by music and storytelling and a lot of Irish influence there. And I left there and started my career in high tech and I worked in a lot of different companies and some startups. But my passion was always around storytelling. And so when my kids were young, I started to create my own stories. They seemed to like the stories, which was surprising back then. And that evolved. I continued my career in high tech, but I continued working on my stories and the characters. And then about five years ago, I had this idea, this little mouse called Spark, who basically the lowest of the low steps up and saves the day. And with that, I started developing it. I realized early on that there was a bigger theme here, being everyone can be that spark, no matter how big or how small. And I wanted it to create something that was an experience, not just a book, but I wanted to figure out a way to include music and audio and different activities and really targeting the read-along audience, kids with parents, teachers with students. And I had no idea, you know, how to do that. And when you have no idea how to do something, you buy those yellow books, you know, the ones with publishing for dummies.
That's right.
And I worked through that. And with the help and encouragement from family and friends, three years ago, I left my high-tech job and started full-time publishing the book, A Little Spark, and the music. And then from there, we, we ended up, you know, looking at some curriculum in elementary school, which we're working on and a whole host of other things. So I'm now focused with a fantastic team on, on bringing that story and other stories to life around, again, all around this theme of be that spark.
Yeah.
And so that's where I am. And I don't mind not being in the high-tech world. And you know, I couldn't be happier with what I'm doing. And you know, we're having some, some good success early on. And it's a good time.
Good. Yeah. Well, all things in moderation, obviously. Tech is a lot of fun. Tech plays a role actually in this, in this project, which we're going to get into. You mentioned fishing village though, and of course Cordova's entire economy is, is based on fishing predominantly salmon. What kind of fishing was done in, in the area where you grew up?
When I, when, when I was young, it was cod. So, and of course that's changed. And now it's crab. So offshoot, so my family, my brothers are crab fishermen, you know, they go off 100 miles, you know, sort of what, you know, you see up there in Alaska. And so that's become the mainstay. They have other fisheries, but, but when I grew up, it was inshore cod fishery in this little town of Flat Rock, Newfoundland, where everyone was involved. And as a kid, that's what I loved to do, go out with my father and in the afternoons and.
Well, that practically makes you, practically makes you family, you know, in terms of, of the folks you're, you're reaching today. Well, I, I mentioned in the intro that the thing that fascinated me about this project is, you know, there's, there's so much, whether intentional or not, there's this, this whole cultural push to kind of get, you know, where, where kids are being tempted to get out of books and onto screens and even grownups moving from, from actual books to tablets and that sort of stuff. And in my opinion, you've kind of take, taken that and flipped it on its head by bringing some of the tech into the experience of, of reading a book. So it's going to be fun to explore that now. And, and you know, folks that have reacted to A Little Spark have gone as far as to say it's sort of, in a way, it's redefining children's literature. So what, how is that? What do you, what, what, how do, how do they come to that?
Well, you got to look at the reality, you know, unlike when I grew up, you know, technology wasn't core, it wasn't central. But these kids today, you know, have phones, they, they use technology. So you, you have to look at that as the norm. And, and if you can figure out a way to include that in a literary experience like the book, it, it makes them more attentive and more engaged. That was the, the way we wanted to do it. We wanted to leverage technology. And of course I have a technology background, but it wasn't about the technology. The technology is really an enabler to enhance the experience with the kids. So what we did, and as I developed it, you know, I started looking at QR codes. And of course they've been around for 30 years.
Sure.
And so I, I began using QR codes inline embedded in the book. So when you, you're reading the book, you come to a QR code, you scan it with the phone, very simple. And it extends the story into the music. So the music is for that song, it's for that moment in the story. And then we use some, you know, a website, be that spark.com, where we have online activities, everything from, you know, word search to directed drawing and, and using very simple, the website, the QR codes to bring some technology, but not making about, you know, the technology itself. And of course you see in some cases YouTube and the tablet, you know, have replaced the parent in some cases.
Gosh.
But this is really meant with that, the music and the text and the audiobook and whatnot, it's really meant to find an experience that the parent or teacher enjoy and the kid or student enjoy and really create that moment where they can work together, listen to or read a great story, music. And then as part of the, the, the book, there's a number of lessons, of course, that we, we want to provide as, as part of the experience. And then of course, teachers and parents can then layer on their own views, their own thoughts, ideas on top of what we provide. But, but it worked out really well. And it was interesting because before COVID, very few people knew what a QR code was. And now, you know, we started using them in restaurants with menus. And now if you look anywhere, advertising, TV shows, all have the QR code. So the timing was a little luck there. And now people understand how to use it. Very simple. The kids, when they're reading along, they grab the parent's phone, they scan the code. And you know, it's that, that engagement that we've created.
Good.
And, and we don't plan to go beyond that, you know, in terms of other technologies. There's lots of other things out there, but we just want to keep it simple. Our target audience is like between four and eight as this read-along, listen-along type of experience.
Well, I like that you brought up too, that, you know, there's, there's, and in fact, we'll, we'll probably talk about this a little bit later involving it in schools, but not just something that's for parents, but, but also for teachers. What about the story itself? I, I am always terrified to try and provide any sort of an overview of a plot or anything because I don't want to wreck it if that's, give the author the opportunity. So what is, what's the premise of the book and, and, and the, the overall narrative, I guess, the overall theme?
Yeah. So as I mentioned, the, the high-level plot is about this mouse, Spark, the lowest of the low. And, but he, he believes he can do a lot more. He has a lot of confidence, but just the nature of his position in his world, which is a fantasy world in the far north, surrounded by ice. And their source of heat is a fire-breathing dragon, of course. And, and something happens, the fire goes out and Spark goes on this journey. Again, the unlikely hero. There's villains and you know, ice creatures that he has to deal with to find someone who could help save the day, who could deal with relighting the fire. And, and so it's all about that journey. And there's some crazy characters along the way. But the, the theme is really that, you know, we all need to believe in ourselves, like Spark and, and the folks, the other animals along the journey. And, and in the end, there's some major lessons learned on how two worlds can come together and taking the best of both and creating a new world, which is sort of where it ends up, that, that, you know, includes the best of the original town where Spark came from and, and another town that they find on this journey. And they come together and, you know, the heat continues and they go forward. And it has twists and turns. It has some crazy characters along the way. We use the audiobook big time in the experience because all the characters have different accents. We have a great voice actor on the, on the, on the audiobook. So, so that's, that's basically what it's all about. And, you know, it ends, it ends in a good place, but there's ups and downs. And then the music really brings it to life. And the characters themselves are, are the ones actually singing the songs at different times along the journey. And for kids, and we'll get into the, the education thing, for kids, the big thing, if you want to be that spark, if you want your kid to step up and they don't, they don't need to save the world like Spark, it could be a kind gesture for a next-door neighbor walking across the road or someone at school. They need to have confidence to do that. And so one of the big themes from the book, there's other, other lessons, but is to believe in yourself. And, you know, it's true in kids, obviously it's true in adults. And so all along the story, that, that idea, not only Spark, but the people who step up, you know, as the story continues. So that was, yeah, a big part of the lesson that you take away from the book and the feedback that I get back from parents and, and kids as they, they experience the, the book.
Well, you mentioned the music and, and of course, you, we can't watch, you can't watch a film without a, a score. In fact, they, you know, they're, it's funny that sometimes in documentaries on films, when they're talking about cinematic composers, they'll, they'll show a scene that is heavily scored and then they'll take the music out and you think, well, this is, this is horrible. So you've, you've been able to kind of inject that concept then and, and make, and this is custom music that is, that is injected into this experience. How did you, how did you go about developing the soundtrack?
Well, you know, unlike most people in Flat Rock, Newfoundland, they sing, they play instruments. That's not me. So I can't sing and people tell me quite often that I can't sing. But I've always, as I developed these stories, in my head, I heard the music and, and the music because of my background where I grew up where music was everywhere. And I started, as I developed the story, I started with the first three songs, using my iPhone with my voice and the melody and trying to figure out at that moment in the story, who would be singing, how the song, the song would sound, what would be the message? And so I had these three songs and I had no idea what I was going to do. And I used, you know, that old tool or new tool, Google Music Studio near me. And I found this studio about a mile away. And I drove by it many times. And then one day I got the courage to go, go in and I met this incredible music producer, Bruce Falkner, who's, you know, acclaimed. He did a lot of work, Dragon Ball Z, if you remember that cartoon he did. You know, an amazing guy. And I walked in, he thought I was crazy when he met me. He thought I was a streetwalker coming in, you know. And he said, come back in a week. And so that was two and a half years ago. So Bruce and I, basically how it works, we have the story. I know at what point in the story I want a song. I know what it feels like. I have an illustration which sort of describes visually what the scene is like. And I create my version of that song with my voice and melody. And then I sit down with Bruce and we go through iteration after iteration. I'll say, okay, I want it to feel this way. I want horns, I want drums, I want it to sound like a jungle scene. And we get to a point where we have what we call a scratch version. He adds all the music. He's, he's an incredible piano player and he adds, you know, string music or whatever is required. And then we say, okay, we need to, to decide on who we want to sing the song, based on male, female, young voice, older voice. And of course Bruce is connected to everyone in, in and around Dallas and worldwide. And so then we select the, the voice and in some cases we bring in other musicians, guitar, other things. And, and then we record it. Takes, usually takes five hours just on the voice. And then we mix it and we mix it to where we get it to the point that it fits within the story. And, you know, that process from beginning to end usually takes three or four months. And so I normally have two or three or four songs somewhat on the go at different stages. Right now I'm doing that for book two. We're on song number seven, which, you know, we're planning to release that next year. But, but that's the process. And, and when you talk to Bruce, he's worked with all these incredible musicians and talented people, but he'll say, Chris is the only one who's not a musician, but he has music in him. So he is sort of my spark. He was able to work with me and work together. And somehow now my music that I had inside is now published. And, and you know, when you, when you see it, you know, a song, A Little Spark by Bruce Falkner, Chris Parsons, it's, it's really rewarding. But it proves a point about, you know, humans and we have so much in, inside. And it takes that encounter or that spark. So sort of my story is like the story from the book. And now Bruce and I work, we bring, we've had children's choirs in, we, we have some amazing talent. And now where we are, we have about 12 people who are sort of part of the music group, different voices, different instruments. And depending on the song, they come in and, and now they have gotten as passionate as we are about this idea, about this idea of be that spark and the movement around how to encourage kids. So it's really cool. And I'm always amazed when I sit there and see these incredible talented people perform and, and how Bruce then creates the music and writes the music. And so that's how, how very different way of creating music, but, but it's worked really well. And we have all types of music, as you can tell from the soundtrack.
Right. Well, and I mean, there are people here, there are people here in Cordova that have, have composed. I'm pleased to be one of them. And it is, it's remarkable when you, when you envision a song and you write it out and then you get together with some people and, you know, other people are basically invited into your idea and to get to hear, it, it really is mind-blowing to get to hear the, the final, the combining of those talents and hear what it sounds like. So there are, there are a number of us here who can completely identify with how you feel.
Yeah, it's a great feeling.
We're speaking with Chris Parsons, the author of the children's book, A Little Spark. And one more thing on the music now, in addition to the joy that it brings and the, you know, having it added to, to the experience, helping it to convey the emotion of the story and so forth. There's also, when you're talking about kids, music has a pretty big impact. It's been proven over and over. And I, again, I've experienced this in my own life on a child's development, it not only comprehension and, and intellect and, and academic performance, but even motor skills and social skills and language and all of that. How does, how much of that was, was on your mind as you thought about incorporating music into the Little Spark project?
Big time, front and center. Cause I did a lot of research, again, I'm not an expert, but on this whole multi-century learning. And, and obviously, as you mentioned, music has been written, written about and how it opens the mind to new ideas and, and helps conduct ideas in the brain. And so that was a, and you know, we looked at that. And then the other side of that related is the audio, you know, in the book. And so you get the audio, the music brings the mood and, and it creates the environment and the audio creates the character and the setting. And then the, the, the written word adds to that. And there's been so much written about reading aloud to your children.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's just like on the music side and how that helps development. So we were able to combine all, all three into this experience. And, and because kids learn differently, I know, you know, I've got a couple of experiences through this process where kids learn differently. And so they, they may not be able to comprehend the written word, but when you add the audio and the music, they get it because we, you know, we take in so much more through audio than, than through reading. I mean, you know, a kid four years old can listen to a song and get it. They may not be able to read, read the lyrics in the song. So that is, and that's a lot of the feedback we're getting. And we're starting to work with certain groups of folks who, you know, who are around kids who have learning differences. And, and so it's, it's, it's really interesting to see how you can use the combination of the music and audio with the visuals to create an environment, again, with parents and kids or in, in a classroom setting. So you're definitely right on with your comment about music. And it just opens up the brain and so much happens when, when you, when you create that environment in children, adults too.
Well, and all of those different forms of expression go into different parts of the brain too. Music goes into one part and, and what you see goes to a different part, what you hear goes to a different part. You know, I mean, even, and it's not even just with kids. I remember as a, as a teen, as a younger adult, reading Shakespeare versus watching it. You know, it's the exact same words, but it's an entirely different experience. I couldn't make sense of Shakespeare at all trying to read it. But even listening to an audiobook of, of one of the plays and reading along in the book completely changed my comprehension of what was going on and enabled me to survive that class, I might add. So.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
So there's, there's, there's a lot of science behind that, obviously. What other materials now? The, the, the book not only has the, the score and the reading, but it extends to, to other things, if I understand the notes here right. So, so how does the experience, the Little Spark experience go beyond the book then?
So one of the things that we, and again, on this journey, I've had some incredible feedback. So I'm sort of the person in the middle, but I'm pretty good at taking input. And, you know, as we were developing this, I had a, a person I worked with say, wouldn't it be great to have, you know, some online activities related that, you know, a workbook or, so we started down that path and we created. So on the website, be that spark.com, there's what we call a resource library. And there's over, over 50 activities and growing because people reach out, wouldn't it be great to have this worksheet? Wouldn't it be great to have this type of thing? And there's everything from mazes to word search to directed drawing. We have this incredible kid, he's 16 years old and he's like our Bob Ross. And, and you connect to the video, he connects to you, come on and let's draw Spark. And we have origami video to show you how to draw Ned Nuff, the dog. So that's become a really important part because it, it's part of the experience. So you read a chapter with your, your kid and maybe the next night you, you do the maze or you do the drawing. And, and so it extends the experience from, you know, a few nights reading a book to a few weeks where you, especially if you plan upfront, you know, what this would look like and what the experience would look like. And on that website, there's a parent's guide, which I would recommend everyone, you're interested in the book, go to the website, read the parent's guide. Because in order to get what you could possibly get from this with, with your child, you really need to plan how you're going to do it and which resources. And you may say, okay, we're going on a two-hour drive, let's take the audiobook.
Yeah.
And so, so we're able to use those activities. And now we're collecting other activities as we get input and creating sort of a, a shared resource. Like I said, there's over fifty. We even have, it was actually a PE teacher said, you know, you need to have some movement videos, like one to two-minute videos and, you know, where you can get up and dance. So, so we created, over the summer, we created four of those videos, about a minute and a half long, using our music. And it's really cool where, you know, the, the person doing the video is acting out and moving and dancing and turning. And, and so the kids get up from their seats and they actually get physical education as they, as they engage. That's just another element of, of what you could bring to, to the idea of a multi-sensory type of experience. So, so that, that is something we're, we're continuing, continuing to add to. So with the book, you have free access to, to all those activities. And, and it's challenging. There's a learning, you know, element to, to all of those, all of those activities and worksheets.
When you think about how having an internet component adds, I mean, if you did a book and then you had a companion workbook and you publish everything and you put it out and then five minutes later after the launch, you think, oh, boy, it would have been cool if we'd had this in the book, you know, that kind of thing. You're not limited, you know, when you have online components, you, because as you said, you can, can you do add and add and add and add and build more creative elements to this whole thing. And really, I mean, getting the parents and the caregivers to use the book as, as a way to engage and connect with kids in a world where, you know, the, the stereotypical at least view is that kids are disengaging more and more and more. It sounds like providing this as a tool to connect the people is really important to the Little Spark project.
Yeah, absolutely. I call, you know, I call, I use the word platform. So it's a platform with a lot of assets and capabilities and it's really up to the parent. And, and the ones that get the most based on feedback are the ones who really take the time. I had this nanny and I talked to her and she has all these kids and other nannies. And she said, this was really exceptional because normally when I find a book, it's good for a day or two. And so she said, this was over two or three weeks. Every morning we do, you know, this part, we do a song and then we do the audiobook and it lasted two or three weeks. And we continue to go back every now and then and we play our favorite songs and, but it requires the parents to really understand what's there. And that's why I appoint people to the parent guide. And when I started, there was no parent guide. And then I got this feedback, people saying, oh, I didn't understand there was an audiobook. And so that obviously, you know, was an opportunity to make a change and to create another, you know, it's like three or four pages. This is what we have. Here's how you get the audiobook. There's the resource library. And maybe you spend some time thinking about how you create spark time. And, and so that was a big upgrade. And to your point, I was able to add that very easily to, to the website and make sure people knew it was there. And it was, and that's the thing we continually do. We're learning as we go. I mean, this is relatively new and there's some incredible people along the way who have some amazing ideas. And, you know, we incorporate them as we, as we build out the platform.
Well, and you mentioned earlier too, the multi-sensory curriculum, which is, and I, you know, just, just the title of that I like because it really conveys itself. And you're, you've been looking at trying to find a way to encourage elementary schools to, to try this. You've got sort of a pilot program?
Yeah, yeah. So the way that happened, again, you know, on this journey, you meet incredible people. So I had the, the first version of the book. incredible people. So I had the first version of the book because we did a prototype because I wanted to test it out, you know, that it would work. And I sent it out to, had 100 people saying, this is the book, and this is how it works. What do you think? And feedback before we finished the final version. And one of those people was associated with a school. And I had lunch with him one day and he said, this should be a program in our school. The message, this is what our kids really need, character development. I said, great. And he said, I'm going to introduce you to one of the best teachers, grade one teacher in our school. And so she read the book and then we got together, and this is just before COVID. And we created a basic lesson plan, following the chapters in the book. And then we had some activities. We had class posters. There's six lessons in the back of the book. So we created the posters from those images. And it was really well received. And the kids loved it. They liked the music and the videos that came with some of the songs in the classroom. And at the end of that, it became apparent to me that this is a really, really interesting opportunity. And there could be something here. So then COVID hit, we published the book. And then low and behold, I had at least five, six teachers reach out to me and say, hey, this is really cool. We have your book. We're starting to use it in our classroom. And then I, you know, sort of gathered that group together, five of them, as an advisory group. And we spent a lot of time on, okay, how would we create a lesson plan or lesson plans over a period of time that fit within existing curriculum? Because the thing is, you can't come up with something new and just try to layer it on because teachers look at every minute of the day. And so we had to align, you know, whether it's reading comprehension, whether it's music, art, into the existing curriculum to support, you know, what they have at the higher level. So we did that. And the grade one teacher came on over the summer as a consultant, and we refined the lesson plan. And along the way, again, you know, this journey, I ran into this really innovative superintendent of one of the school systems in Dallas. And we had lunch, and I told him what I was doing. And a day later, he called me and said, you know, we'd love to pilot this in some schools in our district. That's great. And so we created the program. And so the program, when it starts, and we've got four of these underway, we just had one finish on Tuesday, which I'll tell you about, it was amazing. So the books show up. Every student has a copy of the book. And at the end of the program, the book goes home with the child, and they continue the experience at home. And that was his idea. I said, you know, wouldn't it be cool? Because kids, not all kids, depending on what schools they go to, have the opportunity to take a book like this and they take it home and the music. I said, okay, that's part of the program. And so when they do the program, they get the lesson plan, they get the books, there's a workbook for in-class. And then in the lesson plan, we have all these links to different types of content. It could be a video on something like empathy, you know, age appropriate. So with the help of the teachers, we sort of structured the program. It will have a link to one of those get up from your seat and dance, you know, moments. And so we rolled it out. And as we're rolling it out, there's new suggestions from the teachers as we go forward. One which was really interesting, which I would never have thought about for a grade one class was, wouldn't it be great to have a couple of plush toys, like the character? Because we used, kids love the plush toys. And if you had like a Ned Nuff and Spark, that'd be great as a teaching aid and it'd be fun in the classroom. So within two days, I found something that looked like Ned Nuff, the Nuff and Land Dog and the mouse. And we delivered them to the schools and that became a part of the program. And another thing was, well, at the end, wouldn't it be great to have a badge? So we created these patches, be that spark patch. And at the end of the program, they're certified as a spark, they get the patch, they take the book home. And there's a packet that goes home with the parent suggesting things that you can do at home over the holidays and things that when they come back to school, the teacher will reengage and ask them about, you know, some of these experiences. So we've, we're through that pilot, I call it pilot number one. We're now recruiting for pilot number two, which we're going to start in January, same kind of idea. You know, they say they want to do it, all the books arrive, all the material, the posters, you know, the lesson plans, the workbooks, everything is sent to the school. And then there's, I do, you know, tutorial, and we have a tutorial online about how you approach it. And so that's where we are. We're still early on. But I would love to figure out a way to get these books in the hands of all grade one kids and do it in a way that there's not a large cost involved. And so we're exploring things like nonprofit and getting support from different foundations to help fund and make it very easy and affordable for schools, regardless of what type of school, to be able to get the book and the program. But, you know, we're hopefully by May, we'll be in a position where we have the program developed with all the input and we'll have a plan going forward on how to make that happen. And we've got some really influential people who are watching this and I think are willing to support once we get there. But.
What about working outside of the classroom setting? You know, we have, well, I mean, COVID has made distance learning a thing for practically the entire country, or at least it did for a while. We have folks across this giant state that are spread out and, you know, a long way from quote unquote civilization. Can this work in that setting as well and help those folks have this same type of connection?
Yeah, it's designed for that environment, if you think about it. Because what you have is the book, you have a lesson plan that is linked to all these resources that you can, you know, communicate. So the communication and the distance learning. And on the other end, if you have a teacher or an instructor that guides it, it fits really, really well in that environment because it's all local to where the kid is. And we've had lots of discussions about that element. So that's just like on some of the things we're doing with people with different learning abilities. This is another one of those areas where the platform could be easily adapted to that environment. And we're very interested in that environment because it is difficult with distance learning. Of course, everyone experiences it. But when you live in remote places, it's sort of the way things exist and how education is delivered. So that's a really important opportunity as we go forward.
Did you have a sense, as we kind of wrap up here, did, and again, our guest, Chris Parsons, the author of A Little Spark, a really delightful children's book that goes beyond just being a book, but adds a bunch of other components to it. As you were formulating the idea, was expanding it beyond just being a book always part of the plan? Or did that just kind of, was it a good enough concept that all the extra assets just sort of developed organically, I guess?
Well, day one, day one. Because, again, what influenced me was my childhood. And in this, you know, little town, and you have all these characters and music is everywhere. And my father was a great storyteller. And I remember listening to the story and then music would break out, sort of an Irish. And soon as I started creating the story, the intent was to have music as part of it. I wasn't sure how I was going to do it or if I could do it. But from day one, I wanted it to be that experience. And I wanted it to really focus not just on the book, A Little Spark, but the higher element theme of be that spark. So that came very early. Now, I didn't have a clue how to do that. And like I said, it was, you know, luck, chance. I met Bruce Faulkner. And, you know, who would have thought that someone could, you know, take what I had and work together to create music? Or the audiobook with Brandon Mcginnis, I met him, just an amazing voice actor. So those things were planned, but I wasn't sure I was going to be able to execute early on. But things sort of happened along the way. And now I feel confident in book two, that we're going to use the same formula. We've learned a lot in terms of book one and how to incorporate the technology. As an example, I have the audiobook QR code in every chapter in the book. And now you can download it and listen to it. But in the new, in book two, I'll have every chapter, when you come to a chapter, you'll see a little QR code on the bottom. You can scan that and you can listen to the audiobook or read the book. Or what some people do is they go through the book with the child while the audiobook is playing, something that you mentioned earlier with Shakespeare. Which, and that's just an adjustment as we, could you learn from what you do. But onward, it's going to have that same format of the multi-sensory and the audio and the music and the illustrations and those things.
Yeah, well, I love that idea, too. Because again, as you mentioned, different kids learn different ways, different parts of the brain retain and process information different ways. And so there are so many ways to be able to connect with this, again, this central theme, you know, where it's sort of, you know, the, it's funny, I keep thinking there's a similar story written by some dear friends of ours, Susan Butcher, the great musher up here, who unfortunately is passed away. Her husband is still alive, Dave Monson, and their delightful daughters and their family, as Susan's, unfortunately, as Susan's life was ending, they wrote a book about one of her lead dogs, Granite, and that's, which is the name of her book. And that idea of not judging somebody based on first impressions on believing in someone's potential, your theme is a little, is more, it sounds like, along the lines of learning to believe in oneself, which, you know, is a message that, I mean, it's so hard to tell if it's just the signal to noise radio and what everybody's talking about and tweeting about and whatever, or if there really is kind of a lack of that theme now, the believing in yourself and that you're valuable and that you have potential and that kind of thing. Have you, was part of the motivation here that you were finding that wanting and wanted to fill a gap? Or were you more, or was it more, you just wanted to enhance messages like that that were out there already?
Well, you know, that message is out there, but I'm not sure, you know, kids with all the distraction are really aware of that. And obviously, different parents, you know, do different things. But in addition to that idea, because in the book, there's six lessons. It starts with believe in yourself. And then the next thing is, and it's really important in the book, is treat everyone equally. And then there's another, there's a few other ones about, you know, look after your friends, friends look after friends. So it starts with you, and then it starts with how you treat people around you. And one of the important messages, and it's perfect in the story, is make sure you understand the situation. Because sometimes, and kids are very quick, they're very transactional, they go from friend to friend, and you know, they, just the nature of a young mind. But it's good to ask questions. And the whole idea of empathy is core to the message here as well. And in the book, there's a, it's core to the book. Everyone had an idea of this individual, Weasel, Veen. And Spark took the time to really try to understand why he was the way he was. And there was a backstory and, you know, things that happened to him. And that was an important message. So I think it's the combination of believing in yourself, treating people equally, and the idea of empathy, and trying to understand the situation. Don't judge too quickly. And I think all those things, you can help kids understand those points. And they're core in the story. The story, you know, there's some great stories within the story where those things are really core to the outcome. Because someone asked a question, or someone took the chance to, took the time to understand why someone behaved as they behaved. So it's really, and all those things are out there. I mean, the intent here is to enhance and provide a platform in which, you know, the children, parents can experience those lessons in a fun environment, you know, inspirational and entertaining.
Well, and if the ideas take with the kids, if they assimilate these characters and these stories and these behaviors they see in the book, it also gives a nice anchor point to a parent, you know. So if their child is not treating somebody else well or something, to be able to go and say, hey, do you remember when Spark did this? Or when Spark said that? Or Spark felt this way about it, you know? And so, yeah, the potential is really something. This combination of technology, like I say, is what fascinated. I mean, as I'm sure you know, we get asked by authors all the time to do programs about books and it gets a little overwhelming. But this, the multi-sensory idea, the incorporation, using technology to bring people into a book instead of suck them out of it, and a lot of that, this, I really want to congratulate you on how innovative a concept this is. And I'm glad to hear that we might get to look forward to more. Any final thoughts before we part ways?
Well, yeah, I'll leave one thought. And this comes from, because I had the school books. So I went to this grade two, three grade two classes on Tuesday, got in there asking questions, signing the books. One of the things that we added to the program, and it was an input. So in the package that goes home to the parent, there are three like plastic wands with a star on top. One is for their child. And the other two, the child needs to, as they encounter different people who represent what a spark is, they present that person with the wand. And in the story, you know, on our journey, yeah, we all want to be that spark. But along the journey, you're going to encounter people who are the sparks for you. And we need to celebrate them and we need to recognize them. So that was an idea. Again, someone came up and the teachers love it, the parents love it. So they'll come back, that class will come back from the holiday, come back to their class, and they'll read out or talk about who they gave those two wands to and why. Like so simple. So simple. And this person said, that's a great idea. Let's do it. And we did it. But so there's a lot of things you can do, you know, on top of what we've built there. But I really, I really appreciate the time. And like you said, we send lots of, you know, email and pitches out. And when we encounter people who get it, it's always a pleasure. And I really enjoyed, you know, our time together today.
Good. Well, thank you, Chris Parsons, very much. Stay on the line. We'll debrief a little bit. But we want to wish you the very best for the holidays and success. Chris Parsons, author of A Little Spark. I'll mention where you can learn more in the close of the program as we wrap up. And if you're hearing this, if you're hearing the delayed playback on the YouTube channel, look in the description because we'll have some links for you in there, too. But been a great joy, Chris. Thank you and all the best.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Author Chris Parsons, our guest today on the Town Meeting Program, featuring his book, A Little Spark, and all of the ideas and technology and perhaps even movement of sorts surrounding this story and its potential for good. I really enjoyed the opportunity to chat with Chris. We had a good personal conversation after we got done with the recording here. And seems like a really neat guy. It's my hope, if everything works out, when we post this talk show to our YouTube channel, the Cordova TV YouTube channel, that I'll be able to put links to more information. Well, not me, Robbie does that, but that we'll be able to get links for you in the description section. So if you want to learn more about this, you can. Again, the book is A Little Spark, written by Chris Parsons. And we had a chance to learn more about it on the Town Meeting Program, your local on-demand talk show. And again, anytime you have an idea for somebody we ought to talk to or a subject we ought to cover, we really want you to get in touch so we can follow up on that for you. Cordova Wireless Communications brings you the program. And we really appreciate their support of all of our Christmas programming, again, along with Cordova Telecom Cooperative. They sponsored every single holiday feature that we have, as they have been doing for many, many years. And of course, a big economic stimulus for the community, bringing in millions of outside dollars to Cordova every year that we get to use and circulate through the community without actually having to generate anything. So, big thanks to them for all they do in the community. Best wishes for a continued delightful Advent season here. Thanks for listening in. Again, this show will go on the YouTube channel as soon as we can get it up there. And we, again, really appreciate you joining us for Town Meeting here on KLAM.